We have another hearing scheduled for two o'clock, give you a couple of minutes.
You know, I, I like, I actually do have something. A citizen brought me a copy of a big R receipt and at the bottom of it, it has Cortez City tax, state tax, and then it says Cortez County tax, which I think what that is, is actually a hospital.
Hospital.
But it does say county, so when it comes time to potentially pursue a county tax, someone may be under the impression that the county's already getting one, so I didn't know if there was anything, but I'm sure that it's, I'm sure that it's the hospital board.
Yeah.
That's there, but it's just named, it's just named a little bit different, so I just want to bring that to your attention, if.
Should be Southwestern Memorial Hospital.
But I don't know, because their cash registers and all that stuff have to put that on there, you know, so I don't, I don't know who, do you have any suggestions, Ken?
So the way we report it to the state through motor vehicle is as a district tax, not a county tax.
Right.
So I think they could change their categorization to district.
Hospital district tax.
Even if they couldn't put hospital, they could at least put district.
They could just change the word county to district.
It doesn't even say Montezuma County, it says Cortez County.
Cortez County.
Well, it says city, oh, Cortez County.
Maybe we should be getting some of their tax money.
Self tax.
I think we should be getting our slice of the pie on that.
Right, we can ask them for this 30 cents.
Yeah.
They're just, you know, something that someone found and I thought.
That's interesting, yeah, because that's, that's totally incorrect.
Right.
From beginning to end.
There is no Cortez County.
Yeah, there is no Cortez County.
Hey, Kim.
Who brought that in, Melissa, who gave it to you?
Pedro.
Pedro, yeah.
Are you ready for me?
I'm ready.
Commissioner Lambert.
Here.
Commissioner Otell.
Present.
Commissioner Sukla.
Yes.
Administrator Brunner.
Here.
Attorney Baxter.
Here.
And Kemp, Prusell, Montezuma County Clerk and Recorder. The Montezuma County Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing for review and determination of a general planned unit development, a GPUD, for residential purposes on property owned by Totten Land LLC, Agent Cap Allen, located at 10363 Road 29, Cortez, Colorado, consisting of 37.85 acres, more or less, with eight one-acre, more or less, lots located north of Road K. 3, west of Road 29, situated in Section 20 Township 36 North Range 15 West and NPM. The hearing will be held Monday, December 10, 2018, at 2:00 PM in the Commissioners' Hearing Room, Montezuma County Administrative Offices, 109 West Main, Cortez, Colorado. Interested persons may attend and give input. Information may be obtained from the Planning Office, Room 270, Administrative Offices, Cortez, Colorado, or accessed online at httpmontezumacounty.org Web Department's Planning. You may also contact the Planning Department at 970-565-2801 with questions. The file can be inspected in the Planning Department during regular office hours. Dated this 20th day of November 2018, Kemp, Prusell, Clerk, Board of County Commissioners, Montezuma County, Colorado, published in the Journal on Friday, November 30, 2018.
It's 20th or 28th?
28th is what I, did I say 20th? I'm sorry, I meant to say 28th, but dated this 20th day of November.
I don't know what picture you want.
Well, leave it so we can read it first before you, I feel like that flashing light.
What?
Jane, you want to fill us in?
Sure. As it was told, Cap proposes to take that property and do eight one-acre lots with the rest of the property being of common use for the people, all the people, right? Yes, the community. I'm sure that he can probably address it a lot better than I can.
Good morning, good afternoon.
Well, the piece of property is 38 acres and with eight parcels, it meets general standards for, in fact, that's a little over four acres per parcel. But if you think about where that is, if you just did eight parcels, people are going to put their fences right down to the lakeside and it really kind of takes away of the advantage of making it all common so that all those eight owners can enjoy getting along and on the lakefront. So that's where the idea came from. So I think this PUD idea with this piece of property, it may not be a universal approach to do with all properties, but for this one, I think it's a pretty good idea. We're still leaving an acre for each person, which is a, if we just say that's enough for your house and your garage, et cetera. It's not, if you look at that property, it's not horse property, it's not irrigation property. It's, it's view on the top of a hill property and one acre is certainly enough to get that done. The only thing that is unusual in this request is that once you do this idea, this one acre, the county 50-foot setback really is not very useful anymore because it, there's nothing left in the middle. And so I would ask that we do something like a 20-foot setback. It really doesn't compromise the overall county idea of setback because each one of those lots is on the order of 100 feet back from the county road anyway, before you even get to the lot line of the county. So as far as what I understand, the 50-foot setback was about was to keep people back from the county road. It doesn't, it doesn't really impact that idea very much. But then it allows, within a one acre, people to, I'm not saying that allows them to make a bigger house, I don't think that's the purpose of it, but if the way we've laid it out, they'd rather be on this side than the other side, it doesn't push them so hard.
Well, does that, does that rule apply within a subdivision? That's only what Cap said, only in regard to county road easements or right of ways or that 50-foot setback?
Or isn't it your property owners? I mean, your neighbors, so that you can't build things right on the boundary lines? So for me and my neighbor, whether, it could be off the road, but I can't put it right up to the fence line of my neighbor to the east or west.
So what's a setback within a subdivision lot?
You have to have 50 feet from your property.
Property line.
Okay.
If you look at those lots, the way we've got them laid out, there's space between them.
Mm-hmm.
So effectively, you know, I honestly, I've not looked exactly if I took the middle of the space, if 20 feet equals 50 feet, but it's better, it's better than 20 feet effectively because of the way the lots are separated.
Mm-hmm.
And that was another reason to separate them like that, to keep each person out of each other's hair.
Mm-hmm. Do you know what that gap average is between the lots, Cap? Is it 10, 20, 30, 40, 50 feet? Some of them looks larger than others, like those first two lots there on the very south end, look.
I'm going to say 20, the minimum's probably like 25 feet, but there's some that are bigger than that.
Is all the property on the west side of Boat 29?
All of it, yeah. The electric company at one time owned an 80 and just by accident, Road 29 just about splits that in half. And so it's 38 on one side and we don't have anything to do with the property on the other side.
And, and what is the plan for the, then, if you were granted this one acres for eight, eight one-acre lots, what is the plan for the rest of the land?
Four.
The rest of the land, is it all open space then? Is that what it is?
Yeah. It'll, it'll be dedicated to those eight homeowners as open space and, I mean, we've got some ideas.
So would that be open space on both sides of their houses? Like on the lakeside and on the backside?
Yeah, yeah, everywhere, everywhere.
There you see the gap between the road and the reservoir.
And we'll have, we have to add four driveways to the county road, which under the county rules, one driveway, two lots. I've already talked to the county driveway supervisor, administrator, and we've looked, Clint?
Clint.
Yeah. And the site distance is okay for each one of those places we have in mind. The, maybe just to add as a note, the parking lot that's on the south side that's in this land, that previously was sort of a, I don't know, parking lot for people that were bird watching and stuff like that, we met with three members of Division of Wildlife when they first looked, before we even bought this property. And actually, we were amenable to the idea of, you know, you want us to block out this parking lot for you. They didn't want it. They said it's too much of a maintenance hassle. They picked up the outhouse that used to be up there and moved it down to where the boat ramp is.
Boat ramp is, yeah.
Yeah, just because they wanted to get out of that business of dealing with that. So that lot, where the, where the parking was, the gravel, is, is part of this proposal. That'll be one of the, that'll be one of the lot sites.
So if, if you bought one of the pieces, one of the one-acre parcels, who's going to take care of weeds or trash or whatever in the common spaces?
That'll be written up in the, I mean, the covenants are going to have to address things like that. I think the covenants are going to be, go beyond that. Because you've got to think about what you can ride in there to keep one person from having too strong an influence around his house in that area. I see them as, you know, putting a trail around the whole thing, it's up to them. I don't think we're going to do that because then it's our idea, you know? I'd rather you get all those folks in there and let it become their idea. But I think, it's, I think it's a, you know, there's 30 acres left after you take those lots out.
Lot of land left.
And because it's, I mean, I agree with you about the weed control, but if you look at this ground.
It's pretty adobe, isn't it?
Except for the junipers, there's nothing growing on it. And yeah, I agree that when you need to do that, you need to do that. But I don't, I don't think that's going to be a big burden that way. I think the burden's going to be when they decide to do something with it and they're going to have to contribute, you know? We'll set up an organization that.
Their HOA or whatever that is.
Yeah, if they need to pitch in money, they'll do it. But I think the biggest thing is if there's going to be something they have to do, it's because they've made an improvement, they have to keep up.
How do Planning and Zoning treat this?
They had no problem with it, they, they recommend approval.
Did they say something about adjusting the setbacks in those individual lots? Do you know?
I don't think that it was a problem.
And the setback issue? Well, we talked about it and.
We talked about it, but it didn't go any further than that.
I mean, that was part of the conversation with the planning and.
So are we going to need to make some kind of a statement in, in our approval of this that we're going to acquiesce on the 50-foot setback on buildings to property lines in this particular subdivision?
Yes, I really don't see much of a problem with it because the acreage is apart from each other. They're not connecting.
Right, they, they don't share boundary lines.
Yeah, they don't share boundary lines.
But if I go in and put my house on lot number three in the corner, I don't know, I'm just going to say right here, does that, then, if we don't change the 50-foot setbacks, does that make a problem for this person over here on two, that he's got to push his house in the back? I don't know.
Yes, if the setbacks are not mitigated, then they will be out of compliance.
We can easily put that in the covenants too. I mean.
You're asking for it from 50 to 20, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Even 25.
25, yeah. Well, we've allowed a lot of things, 25 feet from property lines, even from county, county property lines in the past, so that's not a, that's not a big stretch. And if you take 25 feet and with the gaps in between the lots, you're going to be closer to 50 foot from that neighbor's property line probably anyway.
And having been in a couple of homeowners associations myself, maybe not, maybe weren't the greatest experiences, I would maintain that once you get eight folks owning those properties and you put something like the setback in the covenants, they're going to be much more bird dog about that issue than the county could ever be. I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to discount your enforcement capability, but knowing how that works, I don't know.
They're more stickler for the rules than what.
I don't know what you'd put in the covenants to assure maintenance in the areas that are not part of the lots. That would concern me. I mean, I realize that it's just juniper, but still, something I need to clean it up.
I'm sorry, I've got these things in my ears and I'm still not hearing it.
Well, I, I don't speak well in the first place now, I'm making it worse, but my concern is the part of the property that's not as part of the lots, so far as maintenance is concerned on that property. I realize that it's juniper mostly, but who's going to end up owning that part of the property?
That'll be on, there will be an entity created called the Homeowners Association and they'll own that. And every lot owner will be part of that. So every lot owner owns a, I hesitate to say they own an eighth, they really don't own an eighth, they commonly own it. And it's, it's a little bit difficult to see it like this out in the county, but for instance, if you were in town and you had an eight-unit condominium project, it's exactly the same. All that grass, all that sidewalk, all that area around those condominiums is owned in common by all those people. All they own is the footprint of their house and they take care of everything else with a, a document that says, here's how we pay for it, here's how we do it. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty standard approach. The common area, the common land issue is a pretty standard approach and there's a lot of very good legal ways for how to deal with that. Probably the most important is not to just create these covenants and record them, but to create a, a set of bylaws and an actual homeowners association with that, so you've got some teeth. And homeowners associations, you know, have the ability to charge owners money and if you want to give them that power, they've actually got the power to put liens on the property, et cetera, which you don't, you, you're hoping that's not an issue, but it does give you leverage if you need to do some common maintenance kind of thing.
Have we ever required covenants to be drafted and, and part of the process? We have, right?
For every single subdivision.
Right. So do we want to see that on this or not?
We want.
Do we want to see that ahead of time for this subdivision?
Yes.
To make that part contingent on the approval of it?
Sure.
Can we open it for public?
Yeah.
The only, since I've been on the board, we only did this one time.
Yeah, I remember that.
The one acre lots.
Those from Mr. Pope's?
Yeah, but it was pretty well spelled out what happened to the, the rest of that property. I think it would need to be that away here.
Did you do public comment?
Okay, we'll open it up for public comment.
No, we have, we've not written them yet.
Pardon?
We're going to, we haven't written them yet. We're going to put a lot of things in there that maybe you folks don't care about, like about size of house and how people work with each other, what they can do on their lots, that kind of thing. And we really haven't hashed that out yet.
Because of that, we may have to wait on the covenants.
Wait for final approval until we see the, see the, the operational manual of the covenants of what they're, how you're going to lay that out to them and.
If that's what you.
I think, I think Commissioner Lambert brings up a valid point. The Pope subdivision that we had a similar thing with, he had very specific, very delineated rights and responsibilities and how that common ground was to be taken care of and, it's obviously going to be private, it's not going to be open to the public, so even if they built a trail in there, it's not going to be a public access trail, it's going to be all for, it's all private land, that whole 38 acres is private property, so.
I don't think you all would have to have it all hammered out because like you said, there might be a lot of stuff in there that the VOCC doesn't care about, but, but things that, you know, might need to be enforced, weed enforcement, stuff like that, I think it'd be better to have it spelled out so that if the county did have to enforce anything, we'd know who to enforce it against and how to enforce it versus, you know, one homeowner saying, well, that's not my problem. And so I think at least a minimal, you know, draft of the covenants would be helpful for the commissioners.
Well, my understanding is we're not done with this process yet anyway. We still have to go through with, you know, the wildfire, the geology, the other things. We just assume that as part of that, we, we present the covenants for your review too, so you've got all that at once.
Yeah.
We haven't even done the plat yet.
Yeah.
So you, you've got a lot of, not you, these ladies.
Yeah.
Have a lot of stuff to look at yet before we get to that point. And if you, if you feel that, you know, something like this, how do these covenants work is a big deal and you need to look at it, I don't have any problem with that. I've done a fair number of these in my life with other subdivisions and I'm probably just going to pick some boilerplate and start chopping from there, you know, and adding. I think the critical thing, normally in your subdivisions, you just record covenants with the plat, which become restrictions on the use. The thing we're going to add that you have to do to really make a viable homeowners association is bylaws incorporation and give it the power to do things. Because otherwise, you say, you know, this year you have to pay $50 dues, they just, the other homeowner tells you to take a walk. You've got, you've got to have structure to it to make it work.
Well, I thought we were still a public comment, weren't we?
Well, we haven't, he hadn't opened it up to public comment yet, not, not today.
Let's open it up to public comment and then we'll come back and discuss this some more. Is there anybody who wants to comment, Greg?
I guess I got to take the microphone.
Pack it with you.
As we said earlier, someday we're going to be able to afford another one of those things.
Well, I don't know. Commissioner Cantillerius is going to get a raise, you might not be able to afford it. Greg Kemp, Row 35, Manca. Two things, my understanding is that the dam or earthworks that creates Totten Lake is defective, therefore the water level is lower than it originally was and so I don't know if it's ever going to be repaired, but that will impact the boundary of this property on the water edge. In other words, it might be one place now at the existing water level, then if they repair the earthworks and bring it back up to its original level, it'll be a different place. That's some, that's something that might need to be considered. The other thing is with regard to your comments about the homeowners association, that needs to be very, very carefully worked out because there, and there are state statutes that, that if they apply to this particular property, can give them rights that they don't have without following the state statutes, particularly with regard to assessing other homeowners. That can be a real sticky problem unless it's done exactly right according to state The subdivision I live in, we have that issue and thought that we were allowed to put a lien on a property for somebody who doesn't pay their dues. Well, we found out through very expensive and extensive court hearings that we're not. And so anytime somebody doesn't pay something, you have to take them to small claims court. And so that's, that's a real problem. And the other thing is, even if you could put a lien on a piece of property, some people say, well, I'm not going to sell my property anytime soon anyway. Put all the liens on it you want to, because I'm going to live here till I die. So all I'm saying is that whole issue of homeowners association and billing for, for maintenance and doing maintenance and prescribing the uses, you can use a snowmobile, you can't use a snowmobile, you can use a four-wheeler, you can't use a four-wheeler, whatever, that's a big deal in a case like this. So that needs to be very carefully considered. Thank you.
You can't take that home, by the way.
Is there any other comment?
To set your mind at rest about the boundary issue, we actually own the lake. The Conservancy District owns the water, but the ground under it, so the changes in the water level don't make much difference. And it probably along that lakefront, from the water level that's there now to high water levels, probably at the most 30 feet change horizontally. And these lots are all within 100, 150 feet or more of the lake. So that's not an issue. With the homeowners issue, I'll just tell you, I've been involved in the development business for 40 years and I've done it a lot before. And I'll try and pick the best document I can and if you want to beat it up, beat it up, I'm happy to let you do that. In other words, if you feel, feel like this is breaking new ground and there's protections in there you want, I'd let you see what we're going to do and you tell me what to put in there.
I would say this, that is, your nearest neighbors have a cave there as long as you talk with them and, and on that first lot. Rest of that lot, since I've been a little kid, I've rode a motorcycle right across that thing, in fact outrun the cops, thank God for your property at one time. And, and you're right, how steep that is. If, if the water was to get up to the level to where those houses are, say goodbye to Cortez, because that's how steep that is.
Yeah, we better run.
And this isn't breaking new ground. Rob Pope has probably one of the nicest subdivisions in Montezuma County. If you don't believe me, go drive out there and look for yourself. And I like the, I'm sorry, but people just are lazier than they used to be. They can't take care of three acres and I would rather see something like this where there's one acre and the open area.
Yeah.
And as far as weeds, man, I tell you what, when you get something to grow there, you let me know, because I want to plant.
Actually, I have an email from Bon Lovin saying that it does not need a weed mitigation plan.
Okay, she's already like that. My, my only concern is the, the setbacks on those lots where you're, where you're going to go inside the 50-foot setback.
But the setback for the Pope on 13 acres is, is 25 feet, I think, isn't it?
25.
So why can't we just, we've already set the example, why can't we make them 25 feet for this one and then we're.
Yeah, I mean, if there's a template that we should fit into, I'm happy to, I mean, 20, I think I threw 20 on there, but 25's fine.
The Pope is the first one of its kind and it's 25 feet.
Yeah. I'm just trying to make it so that there's only a 50, it's not a 50 by 50 square left for a person to build in, that's all.
Right. No, I'm, I'm very comf, that, that 25 foot makes, especially with the distances between the property, the lot lines anyway, that's going to give, that's going to give plenty of separation on, on those lots and those buildings, so I'm, I'm good with it. I, I would, I think we would like to see your, your covenants and your HOA agreement to go along with this, just so we have it of record so that we know what's been agreed to by the property owners when they buy in, buy into those lots, but outside of that, I'm, you're going to take an ugly piece of ground to make something out of it.
Yeah, and the only thing I'm cautious of is I, I don't want the county to be in the middle of HOA agreements.
No, no.
I'm very concerned about that.
Well, I think it just makes it a matter of record so that, so that somebody comes in that's outside of that subdivision and says, hey, what's going on over there? I want to check into that, that Totten Lake LLC subdivision and see what, yeah, not, not that we're going to be monitoring that HOA or anything. Yeah, not, not that we're gonna be monitoring that HOA or anything, but at least, at least have it in, in, in the subdivision records with our, our records here. So, we have a document that says, here's, here's how they laid it out and here's what they're doing.
I think if you like, if you like what we end up writing, like I say, that amongst those eight owners, there'll be a couple of pretty good watchdogs.
Yeah.
And I doubt that if there's a conflict, you'll ever see it.
Ever come our way.
Is there any other comment from the public? If not, we'll bring it back. My only other concern, have you checked with the Health Department on this as far as what might be required?
Check with the...
Health Department.
Septic, septic service.
Well, that's what I do for a living and, uh...
He designs the system.
We're gonna, we're, we're gonna say the first choice is you put it on your lot. But because there's a lot of really nice empty ground left there, we're gonna leave that as an option. Can't you get it on your lot? You need a replacement in the future, et cetera. That's one of the, uh, things the common ground's gonna be available for. You put your leach field out there, you know? We're not gonna encourage that because an acre's about enough to do that. But, uh, you do it wrong, you decide you wanna put a garage over where that is, that kind of thing, and leave that, we're gonna leave that option open.
Being that close to the lake, isn't a problem?
It's pretty far. Pretty hard to imagine, uh, the worst one-legged septic system design I could ever think of, it's pretty hard to imagine it getting to the lake. I mean, it's a pretty long ways down that hill. I, I've seen a lot of failed septic systems in my life and I'd say fifty feet for the stuff running down the wa, down the ground is about as far as it ever gets. And we're a long, long, long way further than that. And that's a failed septic system. I mean, a good one, not to get there at all.
We need a motion. I'm ready to make the motion.
Okay, I'm ready.
I would like to move that the general planned unit development, the GPUD for property owned by Totten Lake LLC, Cap Allen Agent, located at ten three six three, road twenty-nine, consisting of thirty-seven point eight five acres, more or less, with eight one-acre lots, more or less, be approved.
Second.
It's been moved in second at the, uh, determination of a general planned unit development for residential purposes on property owned by Totten Lake LLC, Agent Cap Allen, located at one zero three six three, road twenty-nine, Cortez, Colorado, consisting of thirty-seven point eight five acres, more or less, with eight one-acre, more or less, lots be approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah.
Thank you very much for your time.
Just like, John, when you get your covenants and all that put together, your HOA and your covenant agreements, bring it in a little...
Yeah. Actually, we still have a lot of work to do to get approved.
Sure.
You'll see us again.
That'd be good to have that in the file with this, so.
Is this approval contingent on the...
Oh, excuse me. Are it contingent, no, it's contingent on the twenty-five foot. I'm sorry, I, I shouldn't make, I wanna amend that motion with a twenty-five foot lot line setback for, for structures. Sorry.
Agreeable, second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to amend the motion that this PUD be, uh, contingent on twenty-five foot, uh, setbacks from property line. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Well, I mean, you're, you're agreeable to that, correct?
Pardon?
You're agreeable to that.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I think twenty-five, but you're taking fifty.
So, then we just, it's, it's twenty-five foot, no less.
I think they're a hundred and fifty feet wide. I'm, I'm trying to remember. So, if you take twenty-five, you've still got a hundred. I just assumed they didn't build houses that big anyway.
On a one-acre lot, you gotta be a little cognizant of that, huh? That's not that big a piece.
Well, on the septic point, the, the, the lots up there, the Wilkins, the Lebanon Estates is quarter-acre lots. They're right, or half-acre, half-acre, I guess, and the septic system fits in them. And they, the boundaries, they're right next to each other.
You know what I'd tell you is I do all those too.
Yeah.
And, you know, by the time you get the house and the garage and the septic system, you're done.
You're filled up.
Yeah, you, I think those are about half an acre total. So, if you make that an acre, if they needed another one, they could do it, but let's not lock them in. Let's let them apply for, I mean, they're still gonna have to ask the homeowners. I've got a problem, I wanna put it here, is that okay? And the homeowners are still gonna have to tell them, you can, it's okay. They don't have an automatic right to do it. But it gives them an out if they need it.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good, close.
Close this hearing and open the next.